Let me call this meeting to order a regular agenda item number one. And I'm calling also regular agenda item number two invocation and pledge of allegiance, Mr. Perez.
Please bow our heads. Heavenly Father.
We pray for the decisions we face and abilities you have given us. Give us the wisdom and strength. Please grant us your spirit and help us in our faithful actions. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
(inaudible)
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which this stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. Regular meeting agenda item recognizing the mission veteran football team and the volleyball team. That's going to be on hold until we get them all together. And as soon as I'm given the green light, I will call back the agenda item for them as far as that is concerned. The audience will understand that we don't want to interfere with them unless we want to do the volleyball team first.
Yes, Mayor, we can.
I believe the volleyball team is here.
Welcome. Coach, can we have you up to the podium so you can help us out with...
I have a...
Yeah, but bring them up to the podium so they can be recognized and we can put them on the, on live Facebook also.
If I may, Coach Lerma, first of all, you know, congratulations to, you know, your volleyball team and your season. Just a quick overview of, you know, the volleyball Patriots were the undefeated district championships, by district championships, and advancing to the regional quarterfinals. Their season was undefeated in district play. Major accomplishment, Coach Lerma crossed a major milestone with 600 career wins this season, and she ended the season with 617 career wins at this point. Congratulations, Coach Lerma.
Congratulations, Coach.
We do have a certificate of recognition from the mayor and the council that would like to be presented to you all.
Can we all come around so we can get together?
A picture?
Coach.
I wanted to introduce the girls.
Yes.
I wanted you to introduce.
Okay, you all just introduce yourselves.
What do you want to do?
I say my name.
Introduce themselves.
Introduce yourself, name, grade.
I'm Cassandra Lerma, and I'm a junior. That's it? I'm Valdez Alafonte, and I'm a senior.
I'm Angela Navarro, and I'm a senior.
Jackie Howell, and I'm a senior.
I'm Ronnie Cantor, and I'm a junior.
I'm Daniela De La Garza, and I'm a junior.
I'm Denise Anis, and I'm a junior.
I'm Bella Dominguez, and I'm a junior.
I'm Mackenzie Gerlach, and I'm a senior.
I'm Kayla Casaneda, and I'm a freshman.
Very good.
I'm high school, young man, I'm a teenager.
Coach over here in the middle. Hi, Coach.
Hey, how are you doing, sir?
There was two coaches somewhere.
Thank you, sir.
And don't get blocked by...
Yes, don't get blocked.
So if you see the...
Yeah, yeah.
For today.
I'll go this way.
Daddy, daddy.
You look so...
I go in the room.
This is short.
Oh, where's...
Not comfortable.
No, it's not.
Which?
Look.
Where?
Which one?
In the middle, just like in the middle.
Is that someone coming?
Ever come the superintendent to the podium and go into...
Can you say your name and your grade?
Dito nombre, ito fe, ito grado.
Stefan Torres, and I'm a junior.
Are you superintendent? Okay.
We'll take the picture again. We don't want to leave anybody out. Yes, we don't want to leave anybody out. Work team, work together.
Is that coming in now?
Oh, sure.
I'm sorry, sorry, sorry.
One more's coming in.
Oh, Karina.
Hold on, Craig.
Wait.
One more, one more. Stop by the podium right here.
Say your name and the grade.
They said, Karina Solinas.
And your grade?
Junior.
Junior. And our principal, come on up. Our principal.
He's just like, all right.
Yes, I'm shocked.
Maybe he'll talk to him.
Here we go again.
All right, all right.
Another cheese, another smile. One more, babe.
I can't feel my face.
Thank you.
Guys, I don't think I need the podium. I just want to, you know, say that winning was our mission, and we're Missionites, and we're proud to be or to represent the Valley. I think these girls, the hard work that they put in. I know we have two of the young ladies, we've gone undefeated, but never have we gone four years straight undefeated. And we had Jackie Howell and Mackenzie Gerlach. And we have, because they did that, I think the juniors that are on the team will repeat. So I think the taste, the flavor of success, these girls will continue on. And the, I can't say the least, I mean, we turned around and we had the whole side of our, you know, what is it, Patriot side, it was full. We traveled all the way to Fallujah, and the support that we had was unbelievable. I'm darn proud to be from Mission, and these girls represented very well. And we will continue representing Mission.
We're going to put the agenda item for the football team on hold till they gather, and we'll call, we'll come back. Meanwhile, we're going to head on to regular agenda item number four, report from our greater Mission Chamber of Commerce. Ms. Enriquez, is she here? I haven't seen her. Yeah, there she is. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So on behalf of the Greater Mission Chamber of Commerce, I am providing the update. So things are looking good at the chamber. Right now, the needs assessment for the overall chamber is still, it's ongoing. One of the items that I have come across and evaluated as a strength that we have is that we are very innovative, an innovative chamber in offering wonderful workshops and seminars to our members. So we will continue building on that and continue the needs assessment. Major events coming up is the Health Fair. We're looking at a date, and we will be sharing that date with everyone once we have that date set. Regarding our membership, at this moment, at the end of October 2018, we close with 403 members. And I will read the new members in case we see them, we'll thank them for joining. Brett Smith, Gano and Sons Trucking LLC, RGV Valley Parking LLC, Robert Kirby Keller Williams Realty, RGV, The Ironman Gartman Care Services, Careers Unlimited, Top Golf, T and E Treasures, and Winter Texting Times, and they actually upgraded their membership. Upcoming ribbon cuttings, we have the Careers Unlimited this Thursday, and today we did a ribbon cutting for the Mission Bell Trade Wings RV and NH Resort. Also coming out will be our member directory book, so we will be disseminating those to all of our members, and we'll bring some for City Council as well. And I met with the mayor regarding our tourism efforts, and with his vision, we will start the development of tourism. And internally, we will be putting together a key, a committee with key community leaders to craft a analysis on what we have right now and where we want to go based on the mayor's vision for tourism. Any questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Are we set with the football team? Are they ready? Okay, they're not ready, so let's continue on. And in your packet, you should have the departmental reports, a regular agenda item number five. Any questions to any of the department members in accordance to the written statements that were given to you in your, in your packet?
May I move for approval, Mayor?
We have motion and a second to approve the departmental report as reported in writing. This our last chance for any of the council persons to act the questions on the reports. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The next item will be regular meeting agenda item number six, citizens' participation. Is there anybody in the, in the audience that would like to talk up to, about anything that's not on the agenda? And you're limited to three, three minutes. Go ahead and make a line over here to the, to the podium, state your name and your address for the, for the record, please.
My name is Adriana, you're right. 3333 Butterfly Park Drive, Mission, Texas 78572. I have come to say thank you for a fantastic Texas Butterfly Festival. It was year 23. We had 110 paid registrants, and for the first time ever, instead of being about 50-50 new and repeat visitors, we were at 74 new, and the remainder of that 110 repeat. So we had a whole lot of first-time visitors to the city of Mission and participating in the festival. We're going to put them on that trajectory to come back year after year, then come for a month, then come for four months, then buy a house here. The other thing I needed to address is signage. I've been at the center for six and a half years, and the building, the visitor's pavilion has been there for 10 years. In six and a half years, I have worked with one mayor and two city managers, as well as the Veterans Cemetery and leadership at Benson State Park, trying to get highway signs. There is no reason the city of Mission and Techstat should not have the highway signs directing people who live in and pass through our community to those major amenities and attractions. Now, I have a third city manager to work with and a new mayor, and it seems like a Herculean task, so I am here to ask that the entire City Council take on this project, especially with the new tourism strategic planning, so that the things we're really proud of, like the Veterans Cemetery, the State Park, the National Butterfly Center, and even the Alameda Mission, might get highway signs. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Tiffany Kirsten. I live here in Mission. Grew up in Wisconsin and chased my career across the country and relocated to Mission five years ago, and I work in McAllen. I moved to Mission as opposed to McAllen because of Benson Rio Grande Valley State Park. I am on the executive committee of the local Sierra Club and used to work at Santa Ana National Wildlife Refuge. My group, I've given this to all of you, you should have a copy, my group was instrumental in saving Santa Ana National Wildlife Refuge from a border wall. It was actually written into the legislature last year that the omnibus bill, that money would not be used for Santa Ana National Wildlife Refuge. I'm a biologist, I manage another nature center locally, and I'm very passionate about Benson State Park, and so we have been kind of reallocating efforts that we were using to save Santa Ana to try to save Benson State Park, the National Butterfly Center, La Lomita Mission, possibly Chimmy Park, RV Park, and Riverside Club, as well as the Lower Rio Grande Valley National Wildlife Refuge, would all be affected by the six miles of now funded bid for new border walls in Mission, Texas. So I'm here to invite you all to our No Border Wall Community Campout. We're doing a big event. It's going to be campout and a night out at Benson State Park on December 8th and 9th to help raise awareness about how beautiful the park is. The park was donated to Texas Parks and Wildlife in 1944, and part of that agreement, the donation from the Lloyd Benson family, was that if the park is no longer open to the public, it reverts back to the Benson family. And it's looking like that is likely happening in the event that a border wall would put in. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Gary Cooper, and I just want to second the invitation to you to the Community Night Out for Benson State Park. I believe you already have copies of this, if not, I have more. And as I'm sure you are aware, most of the reasons people come to Mission from, from out of town or from out of state are things that will be behind the border wall as they, if they build it as currently planned. This includes La Lomita Mission, which is both the namesake and the logo of the city of Mission. It's on a painting here, it's on the glass there, it's on the flag flying outside City Hall I saw. It includes Benson State Park, it includes the National Butterfly Center and the National Wildlife Refugees that are adjacent, it includes the Riverside Club. All of that's going to be behind the law, the wall and inaccessible to people, and so much of the reason to visit Mission will be gone if they build it as it is. I might add, the same thing is true of the current deployment of troops on the border. It is deterring people from coming to the Valley and specifically from coming to Mission by giving the impression that we are a dangerous war zone here in the Rio Grande Valley. And you good council members have already passed a resolution opposing expansion of the border wall last fall, so I just wanted to thank you again for that and to encourage you to continue and expand your efforts to stop that wall from being enlarged and built as seems to be in the works right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Joshua. Grew up in Mission, went to school in Mission, and right now currently living in Annenberg just to live closer to my campus. In 2017, the city of Mission adopted a resolution opposing the border wall as a lifelong Mission resident. I really asked the city just to uphold and honor the resolution and get behind the community with one of the events that we're having because it is important trying to change the narrative because the city of Mission isn't, isn't dangerous. I lived here my whole entire life, and I've never been in danger in any part of the city. The city of Mission, like going back to the last point, one of the people up here made at the city of Mission, we get our name, our city name from the chapel and our logo from the chapel. If the customs and border protections destroys our environment, being in the Butterfly Nature Center and parts of La Lomita, destroys the chapel in La Lomita, and they're willing to tear gas mother and children, like at that point, we should be asking ourselves, is anything sacred? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else that's not on the agenda, please state your name and...
Hello, 12 Floridas, 1201 Carroll. I've got my sister Heather Flores and her friend Cindy Sabrina Pacheco, and I'd like to address the council, city manager, and the mayor. It's the year 2018. Mission was founded in 1908. I don't know if it's been celebrated this year, I haven't seen it on any agenda, hasn't been celebrated on it. Well, I bought a cake, so I'd like to say happy birthday to Mission. And that's okay. Let me get it.
Anybody else, or citizens' participation? Anybody else? Citizens' participation? Anybody else, citizens' participation? There be nobody else, then I'm going to move back to, to recognize the football, the football team as soon as Lerma finishes.
Can I turn on fire in here?
The fire marshal's over there. Chief's over there. Yes. We're going to bring in the football team first. Okay, let's...
Let's do the football team, and then you can do the cake.
We don't want them to lose their practice and so forth. Come on, guys. Great job, brother. Good job, brother. Good job, brother. Good work, brother. Brother, good job. Good job, brother. Good job. Awesome, you did great. You did great, congratulations. Good work, brother. Good job, man. Good job, brother. Good work, brother. Brother, good job. Good job, guys. Good job. Awesome, you did great. You did great, congratulations. Good work, brother. Good job, man. Brother, good job. Good work, guys. Good job, brother. Good job, brother. A little bit more room back over there. Great, you did awesome. Wherever you get some. Both because you honor us in the podium, please. Absolutely. Congratulations. 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 Leo. Congratulations. Really? Why didn't we have our city manager make a few words? And then we'll, we'll let you, Coach, honor us with some, some words here as your students and players have honored us as ambassadors of a great team in Mission.
Sir. Absolutely, thank you, Mayor. You know, the Veterans Memorial Patriots football are undefeated and district playing. The Veterans Memorial Patriots are undisputed district champs, by district champions, area champions, and are now advancing to the regional semifinals on Saturday against Corpus Christi at the Alamodome on Saturday. Coach Guipin, congratulations, good luck, and we're very proud that you are from Mission.
Thank you, Randy. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all to the City Council for having us here very much. I know y'all are busy, and I'm not going to take too very much of your time because I could stand up here and talk about these boys for hours. I'm staring at this thing here while I'm trying to look over here at you, Mayor and City Council, I apologize. But these young men have represented your city. I know there was a lot of city officials in here, I know there's a lot of school district officials in here, and they've represented your city in extremely well-mannered and a successful way that they go about their business, whether we're at a restaurant, whether we're walking the halls at our school, or whether we're taking care of business on a field on a Friday night. And I could not be prouder of this bunch. They, they've set a lot of firsts in the history of our 17-year history of our school. They've done a great job for us, and you know, they're the ones, you see that blond hair all of it, that's just a sign of solidarity that we had with our, with our superintendent's blessing to stand up and say, you know, we believe in one heartbeat, and we believe in, in one mission, as we always have said in this city. So we're, we're very appreciative of y'all taking y'all's time to have us out here tonight. We're very appreciative of all of you that are here this evening, and I am very appreciative. I love these boys, I love their coaches that are not here tonight, I sent them home, we rushed up here, we had to get our film work in today, but it's a special thing, and we've told the boys, we're not going up on Saturday night on a field trip. We're not going up there to be somebody's sacrificial lamb in the third round of the playoffs. We're going up there to win a football game on Saturday night, and I believe that next week we will be preparing for the regional final. I believe that next week we will be in the final eight teams in the state of Texas in our tournament, and it is a very exciting time to be a Patriot, and for lack of a better term, I'm proud of these boys, I love these boys. Thank y'all very much for having us, and we'll get out of y'all's way.
Coach, a small token of appreciation for your team, you know, it is a dedicated plaque for you to put.
That'll go on my wall in our office. Yes, sir, without a doubt.
I think we're going to move forward over here so we can take a group picture with them.
Okay, yeah, let me take it. Seniors go to the back, and the underclassmen go here in the front. And you're going to see a lot of seniors in the back, and maybe not as many underclassmen up here, but mark my words right now, we're going to be really, really good for the next few years. Our varsity was nine and O, our JV was nine and O, and our freshman were nine and O. We've got a really good thing going, and these guys up front, they're going to come back, and hopefully they'll honor us again here real soon.
Get to go to the end because it's so tall.
We have the mayor, the assistant mayor.
Get down, get down. Crouch down.
I want to go to the other side.
What a group, what a group.
Yeah.[1566.12]
while I'm trying to look over here at you, Mayor and city council. I apologize. But, uh, these young men have represented your city. I, I know there was a lot of city officials in here. I know there's a lot of school district officials in here, and they've represented your city in extremely well-mannered and a successful way that they go about their business, whether we're at a restaurant, whether we're walking the halls at our school, or whether we're taking care of business on a field on a Friday night. And I could not be prouder of this bunch. They, they, they've set a lot of firsts in the history of our seventeen-year history of our school. They've done a great job for us and, you know, they're the ones that you see that blond hair all of it. And that's just a sign of solidarity that we had with our, with our superintendent's blessing, uh, to stand up and say, you know, we believe in one heartbeat and, and we believe in, in, in one mission as we always have said in this city. So we're, we're very appreciative of y'all taking y'all's time to have us out here tonight. And we're very appreciative of all of you that are here this evening, and I am very appreciative. I love these boys. I love their coaches that are not here tonight. I sent them home. We rushed up here. We had to get our film work in today. But, uh, it's a special thing and we've told the boys, we're not going up on Saturday night on a field trip. We're not going up there to be somebody sacrificial lamb in the third round of the playoffs. We're going up there to win a football game, uh, on Saturday night and... And I believe that next week we will be preparing for the regional final. I believe that next week we will be in the final eight teams in the state of Texas in our tournament. And it is a very exciting time to be a Patriot and for lack of a better term, I'm proud of these boys. I love these boys. Thank y'all very much for having us and we'll get out of y'all's way.
Coach, a small token of appreciation for your team. You know, it is a, a dedicated plaque for you to put.
That'll go on my wall in our office. Yes, sir. Without a doubt.
I think we're going to move forward over here so we can take a group picture with them.
And you're gonna see a lot of seniors in the back and maybe not as many underclassmen up here, but mark my words right now, we're gonna be really, really good for the next few years. Our varsity was nine and O, our JV was nine and O, and our freshman were nine and O. We've got a really good thing going and these guys up front, they're gonna come back and hopefully y'all honor us again here real soon.
Hey, we need to bring him back. Take a picture of him. Ralph, Ralph? Go Ralph, come back.
You know what I'm saying? Oh, the...
What I see, you can turn on.
The boys?
Don't burn the building, please.
I was gonna do that, but we're gonna carry it back. There we go. We love my community. Gotta have cake. Okay, who's got a good voice so they can say happy birthday? Jesse Lerma, my nominee. Remember you, Flya. Ready? Happy chest, ready? One, two, three. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Mission. Happy birthday to you. Yeah. Make a wish. Okay, come on, Mayor, make a wish. Way to go. I guess I'll take it like that. There'll be cake for y'all afterwards. Thanks.
Again, happy birthday, Mission. Hundred and ten years. Moving right along in the agenda, 1.0 public hearing, 1.1A, Mr. Acevedo introduce ordinance forty-seven twenty-nine, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1A is a public hearing for rezoning of a point eight five acre tract of land out of lot twenty-nine dash four West Edition Sherland subdivision. The property is currently zoned C3 and the request is to change the property back to R1 single-family residential. The applicant is Mr. Brentueyo Cortina. Saying if the council is inclined to approve this rezoning request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On November fourteen, two thousand and eighteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The subject site is at the northwest corner of West Two Mile Road and Trosper Road. The corner lot measures approximately two hundred and fourteen feet by a depth of a hundred and seventy-five feet. Or I'm sorry, it's a hundred and seventy-five feet by a depth of two hundred and fourteen feet, which equates to the point eight five acres. The surrounding zones include R1 single-family to the north and agricultural open interim to all other directions. The future land use map does reflect this as a low density. Um, thus the R1 request is consistent. Uh, there was no opposition during the P and Z meeting. This is actually a downgrade from a commercial to a residential. As you can see there on the aerial, there is a residential structure already on the house. And, uh, since there was no opposition, the board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1A is now before you.
Uh, this is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this request? Uh, please come to the podium and state your position, name, and address. This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this request? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this request? There be nobody, I will, uh, close the public hearing and open it for any discussion by the council.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to move for approval of ordinance forty-seven twenty-nine. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. A motion carries. Ordinance forty-seven twenty-nine is approved, Mr. Acevedo. 1.1B rezoning, Mr. Acevedo, public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1B is a public hearing for rezoning of a point eight acre tract of land out of lot two forty-six, John H. Sherry subdivision from AOI to R3. The applicant is Romeo De Leon, and if the council is inclined to approve this rezoning request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On November fourteen, two thousand and eighteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The subject site is located west of Taylor Road between Summer Breeze and East Twentieth. Uh, the surrounding zones include R1 to the north. To the east, you have the city of McAllen, which borders Taylor Road. To the west, you have R1 single-family residential. And to the south, you do have a multifamily R3 community. On, uh, January twenty-fifth, two thousand and sixteen, the city council voted to approve the large acres or acreage tract just to the south for a hundred and twelve, um, multi-unit senior community. And it is private and gated, as is the one that is being proposed here tonight. Uh, there was no opposition during the P and Z meeting. Uh, this is actually a rendering of the thirteen apartments that are being proposed on the point eight acres. Uh, it's gonna be private and gated and, uh, it's gonna have access off of Taylor Road. There was no opposition during the P and Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1B is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning? There be no person in the public hearing, I'll close the public hearing and open it for further discussion by any of the council member on the rezoning.
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve, uh, ordinance forty-seven thirty. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 1.1C conditional use permit, Mr. Acevedo.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1C is a public hearing for conditional use permit to have a drive-through service window at El Tranvia. This is at twenty-five fifteen South Colorado Suite, eleven, block, lot two of Block Two of Santa Lucia Development Subdivision. Property is owned C3 general commercial and the applicant is Guillermo Cortez. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On November fourteen, two, two thousand and eighteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit. The applicant is proposing to have a taqueria. Currently, um, Mr. Cortez, or previously he had a snack shop, um, they're at that same site. Uh, the snack shop wasn't doing too good, so he wanted to convert it into a taqueria. Uh, he did have a CUP for the drive-through window when he operated the snack shop, uh, but he has since changed the menu, changed the name, and is now, uh, operating a taqueria. The days and hours of operation are Monday through Sunday from eight AM to twelve AM. A total of four employees man the operation and parking and landscaping are existing and they meet code. There was no opposition during the P and Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval, subject to a one-year reevaluation, that the CUP is not transferable to others, and that they continue to comply with building, fire, sign, and health codes. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1C is now before you.
Uh, this is a public hearing on a conditional use permit. Anybody in favor or against this request? Please come to the podium, state your, your, your stand and name and address, please. This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning? Corrected, uh, conditional use permit? This is a public hearing on a conditional use permit. Anybody in favor or against this request? There be no one, I'm gonna close the public hearing and open it for further discussion by any of the council persons. We have a motion and a second to approve, uh, ordinance forty-seven thirty-one. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Is that it? I asked. Okay. Go ahead and ask.
Is there, uh, uh, seating available in, in this?
Yeah, I don't think we have any interior pictures, but it is a full-fledged restaurant with, um, tables throughout the interior.
I just wanna make that point, that it does have seating available inside.
Not, not only a drive-through.
You can see some of the tables through the, through the glass there, but, uh, yeah, it is a, it's got a lot of seating inside.
Ordinance forty-seven thirty-one is approved, Mr. Acevedo. Uh, item 1.1D?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1D is a public hearing for conditional use permit to have a drive-through service window at seven fifteen East Sixth Street. This is at lots five and six of block one twelve of the Mission original townsite subdivision. And the property is owned neighborhood commercial C2 and the applicant is Margarita de la Fuente. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On November fourteen, two thousand and eighteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit. The subject site is located at the northeast corner of Carrollum and Sixth Street. Uh, the applicant is gonna be the first of its kind in which they're gonna be, uh, they're proposing a mixed use where the, uh, the portion of the building that's fronting Sixth Street is gonna be used for commercial and the back part is gonna be used for apartments. This is a rendering of the site plan that is being proposed. Uh, you have three smaller four hundred and sixty-five to four hundred and eighty-four square foot, uh, commercial buildings that are being proposed. And then you have three apartments to the north that are also being proposed. Um, one of the things that the applicant is requesting is that they are allowed to operate with the drive-through window on Suite A, um, on the southwest corner of the building. And, uh, we looked at it and we, we don't have at this time a restaurant or any proposal, but before construction, the applicant wanted to make sure that she has a CUP in place so that she can continue with her development. I did tell her that certain businesses would probably not be allowed at this location because of the size. For example, a, a snack shop or something like that where it would create large lines would not be, uh, something that we would be in favor of. But she recommended that, or she suggested that she's gonna be, um, she wants like a dry cleaners, uh, something that's gonna complement the businesses that are already in the area. Uh, if, it could be a drive-through store, but, uh, she, she agreed to not have like a snack shop, uh, because she, she understands that it's gonna create traffic issues. So, uh, she wants something less intense, maybe a drive-through store or a, a dry cleaners. And like I said, this, this would be the first of its kind. Um, as far as parking, they're showing about twenty-four parking spaces. Uh, one of the things that I did have a chance to, um, review is that we may eliminate some parking spaces on the north side where like number six, seven, eight, nine, and ten are identified. Uh, she has an excess number of parking spaces and we'd rather see some greenery, uh, for the residents that live within. So, um, I'm gonna be mentioning or making that recommendation during the building permit stage. Uh, but at this time, all we're, we're reviewing here is the conditional use permit for the drive-through window. Uh, as far as the construction, it's already zoned, uh, for what is being proposed. We're only considering the drive-through window here tonight. And, um, we did recommend for approval. There was some public opposition during the meeting. However, the Planning and Zoning Commission did unanimously recommend approval of this conditional use permit. Staff is also recommending approval for one year from the time of issuance with the conditions that the drive-through operations cease at nine PM and that the conditional use permit not be transferable to others and that they comply with building, fire, sign, and health codes. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1D is now before you.
This is a public hearing and conditional use permit. Uh, anybody in favor or against this request? If you're in favor or against this request, ma'am, just come up to the podium, state your name and, uh, address for the record and state your position, ma'am.
Hi. I get a little nervous, but, um, I'm gonna see if I... My name's Josie and, uh, I'm not sure if we can do the other slide, the one where it shows, um, I live on that corner, six oh one North Carrollum. My name's Josie Chapa. I've been a, a resident of the city of Mission for forty-five years. I've lived here for, since I've been five and I've lived in that location since then. And I'm opposed, um, for this drive-through. Um, I just, you know, want the developer, the investor to know that I'm not opposed to her developing the land. I just, uh, don't think the drive-through is a, a good idea for our neighborhood. It seems to me that there could be some safety concerns, um, with the traffic, um, assuming that it does, you know, um, flourish or does have, you know, a lot of business. Also, the noise and health issues that I feel that, um, could arise. I, I just don't think that neighborhood was ever set up for something like that. Uh, I think it was more for residential. Um, let's see. Also, um, it's just doesn't seem like it's very unified to have something like that in that area, it being a family neighborhood. And, uh, it's been over three decades that we haven't had anything in that area, no activity of business or anything. Um, so it is a concern on the, you know, on my part. And, um, so I live on lot seven and I just, uh, want you all to know that, um, I feel that maybe we should keep, you know, the city unified as you all have done already so far, keeping businesses in locations that are more, you know, proper, like in Brian and Business Eighty-three and four ninety-five, which there's more wider streets there that can deal with this type of, of, uh, traffic. And not a, you know, drive-through seems to me in my neighborhood that it just wouldn't work out. But, but just so, um, you know, the developer, the investor knows, I'm not here opposing her development. I'm just, the drive-through doesn't seem like a, a wise choice for our neighborhood. So if, um, hopefully you can take my voice or my opinion into consideration, I would really appreciate that. And thank you for your services.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit?
My name is Margarita de la Fuente. I'm the owner. Um, the property has been over probably ten years, twenty years, um, without usage. We bought it as commercial. Um, if it would be, um, residential, we wouldn't have bought it. We considered the property A-plus for the, um, for the area. We understand that it could be a little bit more, uh, traffic, but the window would be a plus for the area 'cause it's not an area that it's like the Conway. We got minimum, um, traffic on the area. So we understand that and we agree that we will not take, um, rents for, um, snacks, which that's what is the mainly that is causing issues with traffic right now. But we want to... But we want to bring a better view of the city in this part of the, of the city. We own also another, another property in Conway, which it used to be a house, and we converted it into a restaurant, and it's going well, not as we expected, but it's going well and is staying as a restaurant. So this, this, this would be the first, the first area that will be mixed, and I think it's good for, not just for the area, for Mission also.
Thank you, Ms. de la Fuente. Anybody else in favor or against this request? This is a public hearing. Anybody else in favor or against this conditional use permit? This is a public hearing. Yes, ma'am. Go ahead, ma'am.
Just a concern, they're calling us, and we have already addressed it, but are also, we had a concern because there's a lot of family that lives, that's going to live, a family neighborhood, right? Well, there's a lot. And those cars being parked there seems like it might be a safety issue if it's not properly. I know it has nothing to do with the drive-through, but it's a concern, you know.
Our staff will look at a buffer system for that. We have in our planning and zoning a buffer system that they will look at when, once they start, they start bringing in a plan for construction, you know.
We did meet with the mayor, with her and another neighbor, that, actually, the neighbor that lives to the north, and one of the things that I told them is that anytime you have commercial next to residential, you have to put a solid buffer. His concern was that they might knock down the fence, and I told him, well, maybe we could install like some billiards in the front to offer protection so that they don't knock down that fence. But those are all things that we could address during the site plan approval.
Yes.
Mayor, I have a question.
Let me close the, anybody, this is a public hearing for a conditional use permit. Anybody in favor or against the request? There is nobody in favor or against this request from the audience, so I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to open it for discussion from the council. Ms. Ochoa, you have the floor.
Do they have an idea of what they, have they had prospects, anything that they want to have? Is it just one, because here it's a little confusing because it says A, B, C, so how many businesses is going to be in there?
Those would be the businesses, the E's and C's. It would be either like a-
Three, like a three little-
Yeah, it could be like a nail salon. It could be like a little laundromat. I mean, something to complement what's in the area.
So it could very be, well be that there's not going to be a drive-through, possibly.
Possibly, yeah.
They find somebody that doesn't need the drive-through.
Correct.
Any other city council?
I have a question, ma'am.
Go ahead, Mr. Martinez.
Wasn't this like a grocery store?
Yes, it was.
In the day? Yeah, I remember.
I believe she's going to be utilizing the walls. She gutted out the interior. She's going to be partitioning it off into the three businesses and three apartments. I mean, obviously, it's going to have to meet the building codes of today because the way that it was built back then, the plumbing and electrical might not be up to today's standards, but that's something that we're going to address during the building permit stages.
There's a pretty heavy dip right there on Carollum. Yeah, so.
I'll go to Carollum.
And where does the proposed drive-through, where would it be?
It would be-
Next to A.
It would be on the west side of A.
So you would need to come into the parking lot and then go to the drive-through instead of waiting on Carollum to get into the drive-through?
Correct. You would have to kind of drive into the lot itself.
Okay.
Any other questions from any of the council?
What is the, like the hash tags or whatever that calls it, that right there? What does that represent?
That's just a crosswalk.
The crosswalk?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions by any of the council person?
And I know that you've said that this is the first of its kind?
This is the first time that we see a mixed use where you have both residential and commercial mixed in.
In this area?
In this area, yeah.
Not in Mission.
Not in Mission, just in this area.
In Mission, we have, we have a lot of mixing.
In the Conway area, you do have some, but in this Old Town, Old Townside area, this will be the first of its kind.
And that's because now it's an allowable use?
It's an allowable use in the mixed zone, I mean, in the Old Townside area, only in the Old Townside area. It's not open to the whole Mission.
Okay. Mayor, I have another question.
Go ahead.
I'm really concerned over the safety of the parking, and now that Ms. Garissa mentioned about the lines there of when people cross, and it's towards the front, is there any way that maybe we can approve the businesses? And then if there was a business that is to want the drive-through, then we hear it then to see how the business is, or do we have to approve it now?
The reason for approval is because she wants to know how to construct Suite A.
But I just don't understand when people are going to park to walk through the front or on the side, like I have, this is like the same issue that we're having at Kane's. Like, they have the crossing through the back and through the front, and it's, it gets very complicated when people want, and there's a line and all the stuff. Safety at night, is there going to be proper lighting? Because it's still a neighborhood. So I'm sure the surrounding people that are there are going to want to go and, depending on what they're going to be selling there.
Mm-hmm.
I'm really concerned over the safety of that. Because now that Mr. Martinez mentioned what business was there, I know exactly what story it was at, and it's been a while since anything's been there. And so it's going to be an exciting time for Mission to have a business there now.
Is this the old Cito Bella part?
No, this is-
So there's, there's a St. Marie or a, what is it, Fifth Street?
No, this is Carollum.
Carollum.
Carollum and Sixth.
And where is Rafael Ramirez?
She's doing it on Fifth Street.
I know Rafael Ramirez.
On Fourth.
This is Sixth Street. This is the old Peña, this is the old Peña warehouse, the old Peña warehouse where the jukeboxes used to be and-
That one actually had a house.
You know, if I remember correctly, it's on Sixth Street.
Oh, there's a-
The old-
This wasn't-
Can you go back to the vicinity, ma'am?
You have the, Sixth Street. It's not, it's not Cito Bella.
No, it's a church, sure.
It's a, it's the old Peña warehouse. It's been there for many years because it's always been, it's been sold commercial since the Peñas were there. I remember that as growing up in Mission.
There's a church across the street, right, or?
No, it's on the other side, Holy Rosary.
No, no.
Carollum, there was a church.
There's like a, yeah.
But the church, the church was on Fifth Street by, where Cito Bella is.
I'll admit, there hasn't been anything there for a while.
This is further north, it's a block north from where you're talking about, Mr. Martinez. Do I hear a motion to approve ordinance 4732, or?
So then it was never a business. It's a home.
No, it was a business. It used to be commercial. It used to, they used to be, they used to do-
But like, how long ago?
It's been closed for like over 20 years, I would think.
Yeah. Yes, they used to, they used to do the jukeboxes and the pool tables and cigarette machines and that, those are the things that they used to service out of there, Mr. Peña.
Baseball cards there.
Yeah.
I wouldn't want to live next to that.
Same one, it will come back to us in a year. It will come back to us in one year if there's a problem or something.
Yeah, this is going to come back in one year.
I would like to move to approve based on the recommendation of planning and zoning staff for approval for a one, period of one year.
For ordinance 4732?
Yes.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second, ma'am, for the-
We have a motion and second to approve ordinance 4732 and give a conditional use permit for one year, and then reevaluate at the time to see what, what kind of businesses they're going to have and so forth. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and ordinance 4732 is approved, Mr. Seville.
Thank you, Mayor. And what we'll do on our end is we could implement maybe some speed bumps or ways of making it safer.
And do the buffer and the recommendation for the shorting, shorting of the parking lot so they can put some, some landscaping so we can be able to break, break that information and-
Yeah, what I'm going to do is I guess I'm going to put the parking, eliminate the parking that's towards the west and move it towards in front of the apartments. That way they don't have to walk across. We'll figure out something safe.
Watch out for the cross, cross traffic between the vehicles and pedestrians.
Correct.
For safety purposes.
Correct. We'll go ahead and address that.
Item 1.1E, Mr. Seville, conditional use permit. This is a public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1E is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the sale and on-site consumption of alcoholic beverages. This is at Taqueria El Sarape, number nine. The address is 2423 East Expressway 83, Suite 100. It's on Lot 2, Block A of Cherry Taylor Expressway Commercial Subdivision. The property is owned C4, and Taqueria El Sarape is the applicant. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On November 14, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located a quarter mile east of Cherry Road along the north side of Frontage Road, along Expressway 83, just east of Chili's. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. This was a renewal, ma'am. This, the previous CUP was issued back in January 11, 2017, and there were no incidents to report. The hours of operations are from 7:00 AM to 12:00 AM, Monday through Sunday, and a total of 20 employees man the operation. Landscaping and parking is, is meeting code. There are no churches or schools within 300 feet of this restaurant, nor have there been any complaints during the CUP's tenure. Staff is recommending approval, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1E is now before you.
This is a public hearing and a conditional use permit. Anybody in favor or against this request?
Yeah.
This is a public hearing and a conditional use permit. Anybody in favor or against this request? This is a public hearing on a conditional use permit. Anybody in favor or against this request? If there be nobody, I will close the public hearing and open it for the, for any of the city council's comments.
I'll move to approve, ma'am. Second.
We have a motion and second to approve ordinance 4733. And this, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 4733 ordinance is approved, Mr. Seville.
Thank you.
Moving to consent agenda 2.0, I would like to make the point that review the agenda items 2.1 to 2.6, and if there's any single one there that you want to remove and discuss, go ahead and just tell me the number.
Mayor, if I may, ma'am, I have a real quick question that I want to ask Brad for clarification on 2.5 and 2.6.
Okay.
Loving interlocals.
Okay. Let us, let us approve the others first, and we'll bring them up.
I move to approve.
We've approved the consent agenda for the exception of 2.5 and 2.6.
I'll second.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 2.5, Mr. Benson.
Yes, sir.
This is an interlocal with the school district, right?
That's correct.
Now, I read it, and it's, it's basically a rent for the baseball and softball field, which it's a very, it's a very minimal rent. My question is, are we going to have to pay them when we use their tracks and stuff, or?
I hope not.
Well, I mean, because it's not-
I would propose not. You know, we, I know we've had a good relationship with the, with the school through all the previous years prior to my coming here, and there's never been a charge assessed against the city for using Veterans High School whenever we have our TAF at some events.
I guess my question is that this, this interlocal agreement, it covers them, the school using ours, but it doesn't cover us using theirs?
No.
I'm just curious why.
No, this is the same thing that was produced last year. Right, we felt that it was going to be a temporary situation. The middle schools in the valley are starting to bring out baseball, and so until they can get property developed where they can have a baseball and softball field, both Cherry Land and Mission are working with us.
Mr. Benson, we do have an interlocal to use the, to use the track field. Am I correct?
No, but we have never produced an interlocal.
Well, maybe it's a time that we do produce, you know.
Yeah, that was my question. I mean, do-
Reciprocity, reciprocity, you know, make sure that we take care, take care of them the way they take care of us.
Okay.
So it's my understanding that they have been charging us for the, for the track?
Last year was the first year that the charge came up.
Yeah. I just think, Mayor, with all due respect with everything, I just think that we need to work with our school districts.
Yes, sir.
And I think that, I mean, 1,620 to charge the kids to, they're gearing them up for our boys and girls clubs when they get older, and I think it's a great thing that they're starting them at the middle school. I just don't think that it's the right thing to do now to charge them for the fields.
And I'm fine with not charging them, but if we can only include in the agreement that they won't charge us either.
Yeah, well, that's why we've been doing it. We started charging them this past year.
Last year, yes.
And so then they started charging us for the track.
I think that's what happened.
But, but there's never been a written agreement.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I, you know.
Can we visit on, you know, and work on reciprocity? You know, if we charge them, you know, they expect to be charged, you know? If they don't charge us, then we should use the same reciprocity.
Show the same amount of money.
Yeah, the same reciprocity.
Okay.
I know, I know a lot of times it's, it's for utilities and for staff to clean and so, and so forth, you know, that.
Well, it, you know, it's a minimal charge. It covers us for, for continued maintenance, also marking the fields and such with the chalk and whatnot. Okay.
Yeah. But still, I don't want, I don't want them to come back.
So what do you want to do, Mr. Martinez, 2.5? Do you want to recommend a motion to accept it as is or with, with changes, or?
It's, 2.5 and 2.6 have, have, you know, they're, they're good agreements, but they don't address, like you said, the possible reciprocity use of the city and-
And you want that included in the interlocal?
Yeah, we can maybe table this for a week or something, or, and include it in there just so it won't come back and bite us.
Mr. Flores, we can do the adjustment on the interlocal?
Yes, Mayor. We can, we can reach out to the school and see what kind of reciprocity agreement we can reach.
Yeah, and just to, just to state, I mean, I, it's not about money. If we don't charge them anything, that's fine, you know.
You, you want to recommend a motion to table it, the 2.5?
Yes, sir.
And, and-
I second it.
We have a motion and a second to table 2.5, and this I'll open it for further discussion by any of the council persons to make sure that the, that all the questions have been answered. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. You want to do the same thing with 2.6?
I guess it, it stands to reason as well, just to include-
Yes.
-the reciprocity language.
So it's, you're putting into a form of a motion, and the chair is entertaining it?
I'll move to table 2.6 as well.
And-
Second.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I will instruct the staff to look into it and work, work something out.
Just say what you want to say.
And if, if, if we cannot wait till the 17th of December, then when we do the special meeting for the other, the other agenda item that we have pending from text dot, you know, if once, if we do the special meeting for that, you can put it in there and we can get it done.
Thank you.
If not for the, for the 17th.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you, Mr. Benson. Moving to 3.0, approvals and authorizations, 3.1, Ms. Carrillo.
Yes, Mayor and Council, good evening. This is authorization to cancel the second December regular city council meeting, which is scheduled for December 24th, and to reschedule the December 10th city council meeting to December the 17th. This way, Mayor, planning and zoning has their meeting on December the 12th, and that way we will be able to have those items in the city council meeting. And of course, a special meeting will be held if needed between then and now.
Mayor, I move to approve.
We have a motion, and do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve the recommendation by Ms. Carrillo. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. 3.1 is approved.
Thank you.
3.2, Mr. Lerma.
Mayor, City Council, and Mr. Pettis. On item 3.2, I come before you, discussion, action, and approval on the proposed increase for the education pay on the Mission Fire Department for the civil service employees. for the education pay on the Mission Fire Department for the civil service employees. This item is based on the last couple of meetings and other workshops and other collaboration that's been held between staff, city manager staff, and Chief Sanchez's staff, and we're recommending the following. The increase on the education pay from the 30 hours will go from $400 to $800. The increase from the individual's 60 hours of college credit would go from 600 to 1,300. Anyone with a 90, the 90 credit hours will go from 1,000 to 1,800, and anyone with a bachelor's degrees will go from 1,600 to $2,400. The effect on the budget is about $15,400 for the remaining 10-month, if we start on December 3rd, as agreed upon in the last city council meeting. So, we are recommending this based on the, all the cooperation meetings, Chief Sanchez's recommendation, the city manager's recommendation.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'm going to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, but I do have an instruction to, and a challenge to give to you, to you and the Civil Service Commission.
Yes, sir.
McAllen recently got a firefighter that got a PhD, and they, they recommended educational pay for PhD. Obviously, here you don't have a master's and you don't have PhD, so I would challenge you to begin to study those so we can look at the, at the fact that we want, as we upgraded the firefighters to EMT, EMT status, from emergency care attendant to EMT status, that we start looking at the, at the future of getting a challenge to our firefighters to get educated in a higher level, in higher education.
Okay. And we should, we'll take that, Mayor. We'll take it back to Chief Sanchez and the city manager's office and to the commission. And we do have three individuals with bachelors already in the, in the fire department, so we'll make sure, let them know that we'll be considering that at the next round of fiscal year. We sure will.
Future study, so that...
We'll do that.
And, okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.3, Mr. Lerma, approval of ordinance 4734.
What we'd like to do this, Mayor, on this next agenda item is amending ordinance 4695 that was approved back in September for the fiscal year of 2018-19. And again, based on all the meetings and all the collaborations that's been held in the last couple of weeks, we're addressing the issues of the wage increase to the fire department, the education pay to the firefighters, and the EMS certification. This ordinance would affect all those. If we approve the ordinance at this time for the individuals, the EMT requirements that we were considering, we have four individuals that are already ECA certified, which is emergency care attendants. We have 12 individuals that are already EMT basics, and we have four individuals that are EMT intermediate, and we have three individuals that are EMT paramedics. That was the certification pay that was, that we talked about. And then the wage increases, you have them in your packets. That was approved at the last city council meeting. Is there any questions to the wage increases that we approved at the last city council meeting?
I have a question for Mr. Lerma.
Go ahead.
Um, I need a little bit more clarification, because I thought we agreed on the EMT, like for them to take the classes. I didn't know they were getting an extra pay for that. We just wanted them all to be certified.
Well, we're, we're doing, we're adding the EMT certification to the, on the ordinance. It was, it was approved today.
Okay.
But part of the certification pay, we have an ECA, which is a emergency care attendant. We added the EMT basics. We added the EMT intermediate and the EMT paramedics. Well, that pay is certification pay. What I'm telling you is there's already some individuals that are already at those levels. We have four individuals that are ECA certified. They've already taken the hours, then they have to take an exam, so those will be paid accordingly. We have 12 individuals that are already EMT's basics. Those individuals, again, have already taken the required courses or hours that they have to do in the classroom plus their test. We have one individual at the intermediate level, and we have three individuals that are already paramedics.
That's going to come from what budget?
So, based on, how, what is the effect on the budget?
Now, where is that going to come from? Because that's not what we...
Well, we have a budget amendment. If we approve it tonight, and based on the findings of the council, the last city council meeting, it'd start on December 3rd. From there on in, we made adjustments of almost $21,000 to complete the 10-month.
Yes, because you had $38,000.
Yes, and the other, the other dollar amount that you're going to be approving would be to start the training that the Chief Sanchez will have to start with his individuals to get everyone else certified.
So, that's a $38,500.
Well, have, I believe that half of it is for the individuals that are already certified, and the other portion is for the individuals that are going to start the training.
Yes, and, and he, he also had $15,000 in the, in the budget that, that they made a commitment to, to, to put it, to embed it into the EMT program. Am I correct, Chief? Yes. Now...
In other words, because we're adding the certification pay, anyone that qualifies, that meets the requirements, those are going to get paid accordingly. That was through all the discussions that we've had. I think we've always talked about these individuals that are already certified.
Was this taken to the Civil Service Board?
The certification pay, the wage, the salaries, is not go through Civil Service Commission. What it, what we do, Mayor O'Conne, is as a courtesy, Civil Service Commission by law only approves the classifications for the fiscal year. City Council is responsible for approving the actual salaries and whatever dollar amount on the incentive package. What we do as a courtesy every year, and I think, well, Mr. Pettis, you went at the last city council meeting, I did advise the Civil Service Commission that there were some changes that were going to be coming. At this time, I'll go to the next Civil Service meeting, and I'll update them on all the changes that we'd like to take tonight.
I would want you to continue the courtesy.
Yes, sir.
In fact, to, to move it up to, before you come to us, let them know first, because, you know, they're surprised a lot of times with the things that we're doing, and, and, and since they're appointed by us to do the civil service work, and I know it's not required, but it's, do the courtesy before you bring it to us, you know, let, let them know.
Well, for the past, and I'm only for the record, for the past 20 years, all the agenda items are going to be brought to city council for the fiscal year, at the beginning of fiscal year, are approved by Civil Service Commission. It's just this one, Mayor O'Conne, because there was a lot of discussion, and there was approval last week. We did not have a chance to go to Civil Service Commission because it was needed to be brought immediately before December 3rd. That's why I did advise the Civil Service Commission at our last meeting on Monday, because of the postings that I had to do for Civil Service Commission did not allow me, we met on Monday, we were meeting on Thursday for these items, so it didn't allow me to go back and amend the ordinance to let them know what happened. What I did there, a new business, I advised them that this was, could have, could occur tonight, and that I would go back and immediately tell them. But for the beginning of the fiscal years, all ordinances go through Civil Service, including the wage increase, the wages, base salaries, and incentive package.
Thank you, because I know they get a little antsy, you know, not knowing...
No, no, but we do every year.
Why have us if we're not, you know, we don't know what's going on?
No, no, we...
You know, just keep them informed.
Yes, sir, we sure will. So, at this time, we are requesting approval if, which is the city council at this time.
Yeah, if not, I'm going to ask one of the city council persons to attend the Civil Service Committee meetings also, you know?
We'll invite you.
I'm asking the city council to, to, to be more proactive with their, with their committees, you know, to be able to, to be with the committees, you know, not, not as a council, as a governing board, but, but actively, and, and so, some of the committees, we're already appointing, appointing the city council persons to be there, so they can be served like a liaison person between the...
And you've been there before, Mayor. I think they, they would really enjoy that if one of, one of the city council member drops by. I know Mr. Pettis has been there before, and Mr. Pettis would also join us at those meetings, but yeah, I think they would really appreciate one of you guys dropping by at meetings, and I will get to the Civil Service meeting's agendas at the next city council meeting, so one of you can attend and join us there. Be nice.
Give the schedule to Anna, so she can put it on my, on my schedule.
We sure will.
And the council reads my, my schedule also, so they can...
Mayor?
Yes.
One more question.
One more question.
Some of those that are certified, are most of them just your regular firefighter? Or do they have rank?
For EMT or for, for the EMTs?
No, the EMTs. I'm talking about the EMTs.
You want me to go through the names individually? I can. I'm not, I'll get it for you.
No, I just want to know if they're...
Sanchez, you familiar with that real quick? I can get you, I have the names here.
Don't, don't, don't give out the name, just the ranks.
Chief, just real quick, I, I just, because, you know, in the past, I've inquired that they really don't want to take the exam to be, you know, of, of rank, because they already make, you know, they, they, we wanted to close the gap, and so I, my question would be is, are any of the regular fire, are those, most of them just a regular firefighter that have?
They're throughout the ranks, from firefighter all the way to, to our DCs.
So, it's just...
I did give you the names of the individuals, and I'll break them...
I think it's across the board. I think it's across the board. It's firefighters and ranked personnel.
Yes.
You know, a combination of all. I think it's across the board. It's not isolated to firefighters only or rank only. It's a, I guess it's, I call it the wakabule, you know, mix it all up and...
I broke them down through certification, and the names are there, Commissioner, but I'll get you the exact breakdown as far as their titles. If you give me time, I'll get them for you by tomorrow morning.
No, that's fine. I was just curious.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'm going to approve. There's no other question.
I have a motion, and do I hear a second to approve?
A second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 4734 to replace ordinance 4695. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I'm calling the agenda item 3.4, and asking Mr. Terraz.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I come before you to present item 3.4, authorization to accept final completion of Inspiration Roadway project. On October 8, 2018, the Inspiration Roadway project from I-2 US-83 to FM-1924 MAO-3 was submitted to the city of Mission for final acceptance. On November 16, 2018, city staff and our consultant LNG Engineering certify that the reference project has been constructed in substantial compliance with plans and specifications. Final acceptance will allow the city to receive final audit and approval from Techstat. Staff and acting city manager recommends approval.
Do I hear a motion to approve? Do I hear a second? I'll open it for discussion for myself, just to give, don't forget to turn on the traffic light.
Yes, Mayor, we need to accept the project first before we...
Yes, once, once it gets approved, turn on, and make sure that all the sidewalks are clean.
Yes, sir.
It's a multimillion-dollar project, and sidewalks need to be clean. Make sure that the, that if the company has not cleaned the sidewalks, make sure that they get cleaned.
Yes, Mayor, we'll have the contractor cut that right away and clean all the sidewalks.
Okay, according to the contract that we have.
Yes, sir.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.4 is approved, Mr. Terraz, and you're authorized to accept the final completion.
Thank you, Mayor.
3.5?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 3.5, authorization to solicit bids for the expansion of Ben Ward to Jim, and this to add four classrooms on the east side of the Boys and Girls Club. Staff and acting city manager recommends approval.
I'm going to approve the solicitation of bids.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.5 is approved, Mr. Terraz.
Thank you.
And 3.6, Mr. Salinas.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. I come before you, seeking authorization to approve first one-year renewal option for electrical repair and maintenance services for the water treatment plants, wastewater treatment plant, industrial pre-treatment plant, and water distribution division. Contract, contract renewal will be through November 30, 2019, with Science Brothers Construction. First one-year renewal option will be at 0% increase in price. The performance of electrical repairs and maintenance will be on a as-needed basis throughout the one-year term. Staff and acting city manager recommend approval.
Do I hear a motion?
I'm going to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and this I open it for discussion by any of the council members. No discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.6 is approved, Mr. Salinas. 3.7, Ms. Bella, budget amendments.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Item 3.7 is approval of the attached budget amendments. We have four in the general fund. $9,796 are reclassifications for capital outlay. $1,300 is for the purchase of five document projectors to be used throughout the city. $3,700 is for the purchase of a trailer for the health department, and $4,796 is for the purchase of a software license for fleet inventory. As well, we have a reclassification in personnel of 248,150, which is for the wage increases and additional pays to include training for the fire department, and that was approved by city council on November 13th. We have a budget amendment in the CDBG fund of $367,904. This is a carryover of the 1718 CDBG grant to finish the remaining projects of reconstruction and rehabilitation. We have a budget amendment in the PD State Sharing Fund of $55,359, which is allocate the, to allocate the remaining funds for the 1718 year for the police department, as well as the PD Federal Sharing Fund, $280,848, as well to allocate the remaining funds from the 1718 year for the police department. And finally, in the Designative Purpose Fund, we have a budget amendment of $39,446, which is to budget for the revenues and expenditures for the 2018 Homeland Security Grant awarded to the police department, which was also presented by Chief on November 13th, and it will be used to purchase 13 night vision monoculars.
Thank you, Ms.
Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'm going to approve.
Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second to approve the budget amendment as presented by Ms. Bella. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Your budget amendments are approved. 3.8, Ms. Mungia, approval of ordinance 4735, am I correct? Ms. Carrillo?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Staff is proposing revisions to the vacation policy. The vacation policy revisions would provide employees with six-plus years of service with one additional week of vacation leave for a total of 15 days, and allow employees to carry over a total of five days or 40 hours per fiscal year, with the maximum of 25 days or 200 hours with no payout from this new bank. Staff and acting city manager recommend approval.
I'll move to approve, Mayor.
We have a motion to approve, and a second with Mr. Martinez. Did you second it, Mr. Martinez?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.8 is approved, Ms. Mungia. 3.9, Mr. Terraz. Mungia. Three point nine, Mr. Terraz.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I present a set of city available rates for disposal of ashes. The rate is sixteen, eleven dollars fifty-seven per cubic yard. The estimate for the whole year will be nine thousand seven hundred. Staff and acting city manager recommend approval.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Do I hear a second? Mr. Plata, you second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Three point nine is approved, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Terraz, three point ten, Mr. Valmaras.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I bring before you item three point ten, authorization to solicit qualifications for structural engineering services and administrative tasks for Spear Memorial Library and Museum roof design systems. Staff is seeking authorization to solicit qualifications for structural engineering services, specifically the preparation of construction design documents with an electronic copy of the plan, specifications, and estimates. Include its final design plans, project specifications, quantity and cost estimates, and all compliance with efforts needed to meet local, state, and federal building requirements. Staff recommendation authorization for qualifications.
Do I hear a motion to accept?
I move to approve.
We have a motion, a second, and this I open it for other discussion. Go ahead, Mr. Martinez.
Just real quick, Mayor, on this RFQ, whatever, I'd like to be involved in the process once the bid comes in, just so we get a sense as to who's submitting.
You have a committee?
Yes, sir. I'll be forming a committee and I'll be requesting for that.
Yes, make sure that the advisory boards are also informed.
Yes, sir.
On the situation, you know, this is a long time coming, you know, the Spear Memorial and Museum. We've been working real hard to get those, to get to this point.
Yes, sir. We'll do thorough analysis and assessment.
Quick question. Wouldn't it, wouldn't we be soliciting for architectural services to include structural engineering if we're asking for design plans?
An architect would be required and we would be redesign or designing a new building, pretty much. This is just a modification to the existing structure that we have right now.
How about the, how about the library?
On the library? That's the same thing. We're redesigning the system and we're doing some modification, minor modifications to the structure itself.
The scope of service or the scope of work, I think.
Scope of service.
The scope of service had the windows also to be removed.
Is RFQ for engineers?
And that's something that's going to be taken into consideration once the structural engineer comes into, into contract, so they can do their own assessment to determine that.
Okay.
To what's feasible for us to do.
So you come back?
Yes, sir. Once we, once we have a final design, I'll present it to council and make sure that we address all the deficiencies in the building.
Okay, then an architect is needed at that time, then we'll go in hiring. Okay. I don't have a problem with.
Is that what our engineer is recommending? Is that what you would recommend to solicit for?
For proposals.
Yes, for structural engineers instead of the, the whole architectural services to include?
Yes, I would recommend to have like a, kind of a package to have the plans and specs together with the same architect or whoever we picked.
Structure engineer.
Well, that seems.
Yes, it's, it's a package, kind of like the La Placita when we did the CWB. It comes with a, like a team of.
Of people.
Of people, yes.
Be specific to architectural firms that they include? Because I mean, I kind of remember that the architect is kind of what the umbrella, and then they hire the other engineers that are, or I mean, we could have a say in what engineers they hire.
It would, yes, it would be part of the qualifications and the proposals that they're going to submit to us.
I think.
Or the committee that is going to be formed.
I, I wouldn't want it to be tabled, you know. I'd rather approve what we have right here and, and, and go forth with it. And if we need an architect, they're going to come back and, at the time when they receive the qualifications, that if an architect has decided for the, that if there's going to be a change in design, you know, because, because right now, right now, the intent was to do repairs and, and minor modifications. That was the intent. But I wouldn't want to table it because, because Spear Memorial Library and the, and the museum both have been, it's just one of those things that, I don't know if you visit their sites, you know, but, but we have areas that were closed, you know, that are unacceptable for us when we're at this point to be able to move forward. But it's up to, up to the council. I mean, three, two votes tells me no, and then I can't.
I say we move forward. I think that the library and the museum need to be fixed.
And Ms. Garcia, we'll go ahead and include that in the scope of service, that if there's any architectural services required, that the structural engineer will be required to bring in the services under their contract.
Just add it, no?
And that will, that will be negotiable as well during, during the evaluation of the proposals for qualifications.
As long as we can see the, the solicitation before we send it out, that's fine.
Yes.
We can move forward, Mayor.
Do I hear a motion?
We already.
We already have a motion and a second? We already have a motion and a second, and this I open it for one final discussion before make sure that everything's clear. The addition is going to be in the, in the scope of service that, if it's needed, we'll, to bring in. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
I want to call three eleven, Ms. Longoria, ordinance forty-seven thirty-six.
Yes. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council members. Three eleven is approval of ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mission, Texas, establishing the Affordable Housing Permit Waiver Program and authorizing the waiver of city building permits and water meter costs. The City of Mission is determined to provide development incentives to nonprofit organizations whose mission is to provide more options for affordable housing, alleviate and improve the living conditions of low-income residents, and further improve surrounding economic development. The following fees are hereby waived for qualifying applicants: residential building permit fees, plumbing, electrical, and mechanical permit fees, and water meter fees. To be eligible for a waiver, applicants must meet the following: they must be a nonprofit in good standing; the purpose of the nonprofit must include improving substandard housing conditions; the organization must have guidelines for participation that comply with federal income guidelines. Staff and acting city manager recommend approval.
Do I hear a motion to approve ordinance forty-seven thirty-six? We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and you will have somebody visiting you tomorrow.
Okay.
Who wants to apply already, so.
Okay, thank you.
They were bringing an affordable housing to Mission, just FYI. Three point twelve.
Yes, sir. Mayor and City Council members. Item three point twelve is the authorization to enter into a reclaimed water use agreement with Simran Country Club for irrigation purposes. The city is currently working on the wastewater treatment plan expansion, and a component of the expansion is to have the capability to reuse the water effort of the wastewater treatment plan for irrigation purposes. Simran Country Club requested service and has agreed to pay a minimum annual charge for its share of cost for the construction, as well as for the water delivery under this agreement. The city shall, shall charge Simran Country Club a minimum annual payment of fifty-seven thousand six hundred dollars to be made into twelve equal monthly payments of four thousand eight hundred dollars on the first day of each month. The city shall begin to deliver reclaimed water within a hundred and eighty days after the effective date of the agreement or when Simran is capable of receiving the reclaimed water. Staff and acting city manager recommend approval of this agreement.
Do I hear a motion to approve ordinance, correction, the authorized to enter into reclaimed water use agreement?
I move for approval.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second, Ms. Ochoa?
Yes, second.
We have a motion and a second, and this I open it for discussion. Mr. Martinez, you have the floor.
Just a question for clarification. When you say minimum charge?
Yes, sir.
Which means they could pay, they could pay more or?
They could pay more on the, depending on the usage.
Usage.
Yes, sir.
Yes. We have a usage fee included in the, in this, in this process.
How much do you anticipate they pay? The minimum or more?
Probably, it'll be, it'll be probably the minimum, a little bit more than the minimum, depending on the, on the need and if there's a drought and the usage of water. The reusable water treatment plant that we have, it is anticipated to give out around two million gallons per day, to produce two million gallons per day. And of course, we want to use it for the, of course, the Simran Country Club and of course, the park that we have.
And we're also the possibility that it might go into, the west side of Mission also, to, to, to Mission West, also to golf course of Mission West.
Yes.
We're, we're working on that also. And the other thing is, I'm asking for a cost estimate for a, a team around Mayberry Road using the same, the same extension, but down Mayberry all the way to our golf course.
Same course.
Find out to see it, so we can service our golf course also at the same time, you know. So make our golf course a lot greener and nicer, as far as that is concerned.
Does it come with a cup of coffee?
Mr. Plata, you had a question?
Just me.
Oh, okay.
Cup of coffee, no?
Huh?
Can we have a cup of coffee over?
No, I don't, but you're open to ask any questions, you know, as far as that is concerned, you know, as far as the project. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Three point twelve is approved, Mr. Salinas. Three point thirteen, Ms. Lerma.
Mayor and Council, item three point thirteen is to authorize the acting city manager to enter into an agreement with Gasa Consulting for technical training and assistance with the rail bridge permit. Gasa consultants would be providing training that would consist of knowledge and information of the Mexican cartels, organized crime, transnational gangs, the MS thirteen, the M eighteen, and current events in Mexico, as well as assisting with any issues concerning the proposal for the railroad project from Mexico into the Mission area. Training presentations on cartels, transnational gangs, and/or current events in Mexico will be charged at a rate of a hundred and fifty dollars per hour. Research assistance on border issues and railroad issues via telephonic or, or meetings would be twenty-five dollars per hour. Staff and acting city manager recommend approval.
Do I hear a motion to approve three point thirteen?
When can we ask questions?
Huh?
When can we ask questions? After the.
After the approval, yeah.
I move for approval.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
I don't understand what this is for.
Huh?
I don't understand what this is for.
We started a railroad, a railroad committee, and in the railroad committee right now, in line with the Anseldo's Board Bridge also, there's a lot of activity happening on the, on the south side of the river that, that this individual, besides, it's not mentioned here, but he's also a retired, retired Kansas City Railroad Safety Coordinator, that he retired from them, who it happens to be the railroad that, that comes into, all the way to Monterrey, Mexico, you know, from Central America to Monterrey, Mexico. So this individual will serve as a, as a, kind of an expert liaison person to that, to that company that we're going to need to make those connections, as far as that is concerned, you know. He also, he also will provide training on, on the construction part for us. In fact, the intent what is to hold a workshop with the, and with the railroad committee on the twenty-seventh of December, you know, at nine-thirty in the morning, as far as, so he can give us an overview of, of his, his knowledge and expertise in the railroad, in the railroad business, you know. We have, we have him from the Kansas City in the railroad. We also have Jesse Guerra also, who, he was also a member of the railroad committee also, and he's from Missouri Pacific. And then we also have a, a citizen, Victor, what's Victor's last name?
Victor Morales.
Morales, Victor Morales, who moved in from Sugarland into, into Mission and, and would like to see the railroad connected all the way to Houston, from Mission to Houston. And, and then we also have Kirk Patrick, the other, the other committee member, Kirk Patrick, who is.
Kirk Patrick, Keith from the ADC.
Yeah. He's, he's also an expert on, on railroads, also on the right-of-way acquisitions. And he's, he's already working on, on getting the right-of-way contacts back for the old two eighty-one railroad, right-of-ways that, that down two eighty-one, all the way to Alice. And in Alice is there, there's a railroad connection with the Kansas City Railroad from there also. So, so that's what, he would be kind of the liaison person to do, to do us the training and the expertise and the connection.
How much, I'm sorry.
How much is that going to cost?
Yeah, how much do you anticipate spending in total?
I, I don't, I don't foresee too many hours, you know, as far as, as far as that is concerned, but that is his rate, if, if, you know, to use him. If we, we're only going to use him as needed.
Okay.
Instead of, as needed. And I don't want to go into, into the standard consultant services that we do, that we put consultants on a retainer for four thousand dollars a month and, and, you know, like that. If we, if we use him, we pay him, and if we don't use him, we don't pay him.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize for interrupting, but on this action, prior to taking action, just based on what I heard right now, Mayor, if we can go into executive session under consultation with attorney before entering into this particular agreement, Mayor, I just need to address one particular question that I have for the council.
Should I get a second first?
It, whatever the mayor wishes to do. I just, before actually taking a vote, Mayor.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second, and that I will, I will hold at this point, and I will request a, a motion to, to go into executive session with consultation of the, of the attorney and. And I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session and, under BTCA Government Code Section five five one point zero zero one. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve.
Do we have a motion, the second? And this, we have motion and, and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. We're going to go into executive session to consult with our attorney based on the, on the agreement contract that, that attorney has a question. We'll come back and we'll advise you as well. I will entertain a motion to reconvene.
So move.
Mr. Martinez's motion.
Second.
Plata, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Back to item three point one three, Ms. Lerma. Mr. Flores, before I, go ahead. We have, we have satisfied the.
Yes, Mayor.
Is there a statement you're going to make or?
No, Mayor, just, I did have a question. You've answered that question. I've advised the council with regards to that answer.
Okay.
Nothing further.
Continue. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? No discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
No.
No.
No?
So you're going to have to vote.
Three, three two. Motion passes. Okay, three point fourteen, Mr. Azavero.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item three point fourteen is for authorization to solicit proposals to revise the city standards manual. And the standards manual outlines the design standards and acceptable components for physical construction for new developments within the city. Some of the components of the standards manual are the drainage, the streets and roadways, water and sewer, off-street parking lots. And the standards manual kind of gives them the design standards and materials that are acceptable for construction within Mission. With regards to streets, it also identifies the pavement widths, the thickness, and the warranties that come with building a street in Mission. Currently, our standards manual was done back in nineteen ninety-nine. Melton and Hunt was the firm that worked on our last standards manual. It's outdated, and we're in need of a new standards manual at this time, so we're recommending approval of the authorization to solicit for proposals to revise the standards manual. Our acting city manager is also recommending approval. Item three point one four is now before you.
Is there a motion to approve the authorization to solicit proposals?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve three point one four. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Three point one five, Lerma.
Good evening. Bring before you item three point one five, authorized acting city manager to execute letter of intent to enter into an investment-grade audit with Performance Services, Inc. Following completion of the IGA and submission of a project proposal from PSI, which meets the project objectives, owner will agree to enter into installation contract via the Interlocal Purchasing System contract number one seven zero one zero three for PSI to provide owner with equipment, installation, construction management, financing, and a savings guarantee, and measurement verification services. The city of Mission decides not to enter into this installation contract. The city of Mission agrees to pay eighty-five thousand three seventy-one to PSI, which is the value of their anticipated engineering and related costs associated with developing this investment-grade audit. At this time, we're seeking direction from council.
And this, I open it for council direction.
Move for approval, Mayor.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second, Mr. Mayor, but first I want to see what, what's the scope of this? What are they going to be working on?
Let me, let me accept your second, and we have a motion and second, and I'll open it for discussion. Mr. Martinez, go ahead and, and ask your questions.
Is this engineering services?
This will include some engineering services. It's pretty much an audit of our existing, you know, services, infrastructure that we have in place for an effort to improve the performance of our water meters and potentially do some cost savings.
Of, of water use.
Water use and electricity, that's my understanding. And we have PSI here, in case you have any questions that they can provide more information on, on the services that they're going to be rendering for the city of Mission.
Is this the only company that provides these services?
No, sir. There's, there's other companies out there.
So why would we not go out for qualifications? I do not like the fact that we are committed to pay eighty-five thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollars regardless. So for something like that, would you not want to go for qualifications?
The city does request per local government code to seek qualifications from multiple firms, and that's the reason why. We're seeking director from council.
Is this a professional service?
This would be considered professional service.
Under sixty-three, whatever.
Under government code.
I, I too have a, have an issue with, if you don't enter into an agreement with them, then they're going to charge us the eighty-five thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollars for giving us a bid and for doing their proposal. I've, personally, I've never heard of anybody charging me.
for giving us a bid and for doing their proposal. Personally, I've never heard of anybody charging me for giving me a proposal.
So you want to go out for proposals?
Huh?
You want to go out for proposals?
Qualifications?
Or Qs?
For qualifications would be better, and, I mean, I'm just, I'm totally opposed to paying if we decide not to enter into an agreement. Basically, this letter of intent is a contract and is an agreement and is a commitment, you know, by the City of Mission to either go with them or pay the $85,000.
That's correct, ma'am.
And for the $85,000 that we would pay them, we would be getting no services. So I'm not in agreement.
Now, can you explain the inter-local planning, the purchasing system contract 170103, how does it compare to the by-board that we always use all the time?
The inter-local purchasing system, it's a system that the TIPS has for services such as these. The by-board doesn't offer these services. That's the reason why multiple companies are under this local cooperative purchasing. So that's.
Legal, a question to legal, would this satisfy the request for proposal, this contract?
Yes, mayor. So if they qualify under this job order, the City of Mission could technically hire this company through that job order. Is that correct?
That's correct. Is it technical or legal, or?
No, it's legal, I'm sorry.
I'm not questioning the legality.
Yes.
I'm questioning the fact that we would be obligated to pay $85,000 if we don't enter into a contract with them. And we would be paying $85,000, $85,000, I'm sorry, for no services. That's my concern.
Well, you would have to do an audit. Well, the way I understood it is that, say you go out for.
Why don't we ask him to come up to the podium and explain?
Hold on, mayor, I'm asking a direct question to the individual. In fact, I don't need to speak to them.
Okay.
It was my belief, from what I read, is that you go out for qualifications and you select a company. That company is going to do the audit that you've selected them to do, and there's still going to be a charge for their services because of what they've done with the audit. It's not like this company solely is the one that's saying, if you don't take us, you know, you pay us this.
That's what it says there.
Right, but if you go for qualifications, the other company is going to come in, do the same audit, and still need to be paid whatever they expended if you do not choose to move forward. They're not the only ones that are going to be doing this.
But if you go out for qualification, let's say they charge less than $85,000.
You're starting to see?
That's negotiable, yes.
It can be less than $85,000.
If we put it out for qualifications, at that point, we'll determine what their terms will be.
That's the only thing that's going to vary. There's always going to be a cost, but if you have a Qs, it's going to be less or more, yeah.
And once we engage and request for qualifications, we'll look at the qualifications and make the determination as to what entity or what firm brings more value to the city.
That would be the other route to do it.
Yes, the qualifications process.
That would be my recommendation, to take that route.
Do I authorize the purchasing agent to ask for proposals?
Yes, but that's not on the agenda, so we can't do it.
I was going to ask for.
Correct.
So if you're ready for a motion, my motion is to, I mean, I don't know if you're ready for a motion.
I already motioned to approve.
Yes, we have a motion to approve, and we have a second.
Okay. Sorry.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed, same sign?
No.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
Do we have any unfinished business? Routine, matter 5.0, 5.1, city manager's comment?
No comment, mayor. We do have our tree lighting ceremony on Friday. We invite the mayor and the council and the public. It's Friday at 6 o'clock at Leo Peña Placito Park. I invite the public as well. That's it.
And 5.2, as far as the mayor's comment is concerned, you know, I just want to wish the Patriots a winning chance for Friday, Saturday, Saturday night, Saturday night in San Antonio. Yeah, Saturday night in San Antonio, and anybody that could support him can go out there on behalf of the city, you know, and let staff know that if there's anything they need, you know, as far as the city's concerned, to be open, open to that on behalf of the city. Now, 5.3, city council comments. We start with Mr. Martinez?
I'll be quick, mayor, because the Texans are playing. But, what? Texans? Okay, good. Just real quick, mayor, I just want to say that last week we had a workshop on our committees, and we filled all the vacancies and stuff, and we replaced some people that had probably been there a bit too long and maybe have overstayed their welcome. But I just want to applaud the people who applied and those that got on the committee. Ms. Garcia's daughter got on the EDC. We had good people in the planning and zoning. We had good people in the parks and recs, so we're fully staffed in terms of our committees, and I think that was a very good workshop, and.
Well, I hate to disagree. We're not fully staffed. Actually, we've asked Anna Carrillo to make an add, because, keep in mind, remember, we added 15 more new committees to, besides, we kept all the committees that were there, but we added 15 more. So we're going to solicit assistance from the public to see if anybody's interested in those committees, you know, to come in and file their applications. Some of them are coming in slowly, you know, as far as that is concerned, but we need to continue to ask for citizens' participation, those that want to actively participate. And please, if you have a new committee that you want to create, my cell number is 956-222-5739, you know, text it to me, because we really want to be able to expand our horizons here in Mission, you know, with, you know, I know that we have a couple of ordinance coming up. Ms. Carrillo, write for the next city council meeting to be able to allow outside the city individuals for key committees, such as the raw water committee, that we need actually experts on raw water to be part of those committees for the planning of 2050, of how the City of Mission is going to look in 2050. That's really develop a vision, a vision plan for Mission, you know, so a little pathway to lead us into the future of Mission and betterment of Mission. Mr. Martinez, any other comments?
That's it, your honor.
Okay. Ms. Garcia?
No, I don't have any additional comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Plata?
No comments, mayor, thank you.
Ms. Ochoa?
Ochoa.
I'm really excited about the Mission Food Pantry's Blessings Box. Over this past week, as our great PR department did a wonderful outstanding video and informed the public about the need that our community has when it comes to food and donating. I saw a lot of people, after it was advertised, go and put some food. They even had to place it on the ground. And so I invite you, this holiday season, there's always people out there that are in need. Please think of the Mission Food Pantry, and God bless each and every one of you.
The other item that you mentioned, the police officer?
No.
No? Okay. No other, 5.3, no other city council? Okay, I'll call for agenda item 6.1, agenda item 641A, Mr. Flores?
Mayor, for the purposes of the record, item 6.1, consultation with attorney, section 551.071A, regarding water line access agreements with Sherland Water Supply within City ETJ. This matter was considered out of order when we considered item 3.13. Having considered the item and advising the council, no further action is necessary on this item, mayor.
Okay, thank you. 7.0, German?
I'm with you, German.
We have a motion and a second by Mr. Martinez. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? The motion carries.